2:00 PM on April the 23rd and we are in our council meeting. We do have a quorum. Have just got a message from Alicia Flory who is caught in traffic and will be here shortly. And Councilmember Kurtz did notify us the other day that he was out of town on business and would not be here. So in just a minute I will ask everybody to stand. We'll be led in a prayer by Senior Pastor Barry Klingon from the Church at Trophy Lakes. And then afterwards remain standing and I'll lead us in the pledges. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Our Father, you tell us in your word that you will honor those who honor you. And Lord, I thankful, very thankful tonight that our city begins its times of meetings and business with a time to honor you, to recognize that all good gifts come down from above, to recognize that you're the giver of all things and you're the sovereign one over all of our life. And Lord, we want to pray tonight for those that are in leadership in our city. We pray for our mayor. We pray continually for wisdom and direction, energy and strength as he leads our city. We pray for our council, for the time that they give from their families and their jobs to be here. We pray that, Lord, you'd multiply that time in their families. Lord, we pray for our town manager, that you would continue to give him the strength and the wisdom to lead us in excellence and effectiveness as a city. And Lord, we pray for all of our staff that work in this city government. We just pray over their families. We pray blessings of favor and prosperity over each one of them. Now, Lord, tonight, as the city does its business together, we pray that you would always let us walk in the wisdom, that when it all comes down to it, that, Lord, we're to love you with all of our hearts and we're to love one another as well. And so, Lord, I pray tonight you would allow us to manifest that as a bottom line always in all of our interactions. May the meditations of our heart and the words of our mouth be acceptable in your sight. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let us say the pledge allegiance to the United States flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. So it looks like we had a Scott Hensel with Children's Advocacy Center sign up to speak. Scott, would you come forward? State your name and who you're with. And you have the floor.
Thank you. Scott Hensel with the Children's Advocacy Center for Denton County. Good evening. Just, it's wonderful to be here. I've been here before. It's great to see you guys again. I do live in Flower Mound, but I have some very good friends of mine that live here in Trophy Club and they absolutely love it. Occasionally, they invite me over to play golf, so love the course. It's my privilege to serve on the board of the Children's Advocacy Center. I've been on the board for five years this year. I'm the chair and we really do make an impact and it's a great honor for me to be in this capacity. The purpose this evening is for me to thank you guys for supporting our organization and share with you some updated information about what we're doing here. So it's difficult to talk about child abuse and the subject of children that are sexually abused. One in six boys and one in four girls will be sexually abused before their 18th birthday. And sadly, Denton County is no exception. In 2018, 1,096 kids came through our door to seek our services. So to begin their journey of justice and healing. Putting that number into perspective, it would, you know, fill up the local elementary school here, every seat in every class. So it's mind boggling, actually. The purpose of the advocacy center is to coordinate the investigation and prosecution of severe child abuse cases and provide mental health services to families to restore a child's potential in the face of the crime of abuse. The way I look at it is we essentially, there's a string of abuse that happens and it generally is generational. And so our goal is to stop that. So we essentially stop that for the generations of that whole family. It really is amazing. How do we do this? We do this with justice. We work closely with law enforcement. We've worked with your law enforcement in the Trophy Club Police Department and we'd like to thank each of them for what they do. Along with the police department, we bring together Child Protective Services, the District Attorney's Office, Sexual Assortment Examiners, Juvenile Probation, and our own staff. This team approach under one roof is one of the reasons our communities are safer. Before the opening of the Children's Advocacy Center in our area, the prosecution rate was 8%. Last year, 100% of indicted cases resulted in conviction, which is amazing. We're just saying, not here, not in our area. Working as a collaborative team is more beneficial to the detectives who investigate the cases. They have resources and support that we can provide to help them do their jobs more effectively. To the victims of abuse, we help them heal from the trauma. We are one of the largest mental health providers in Denton County. Last year, we provided 13,000 mental health services to people that we served. And these services are offered to the children and their families. So we find that if we do that together, it's more effective services for them. These are all both offered in English and Spanish and they're free, no charge for what we do. You guys have always been a supporter of the Advocacy Center and we appreciate your past and ongoing support. Hey, the need's growing. Last year, we had a 35% increase in the number of services we provided. The year before, if we look at the two years, 70% increase. Why is that happening? Population growth, there's more awareness, things that have come out in the news, the Catholic Church, Southern Baptist Convention, Olympic gymnastics scandals, people are rising up and there's more outcries. The outcry gives us more opportunities to serve, so where we can do the justice and healing aspects. We are opening a new facility in Lewisville. We're currently under construction and we're also constructing the second facility in Denton to better serve our community. So you guys are not alone here in Trophy Club. Last year, we provided 389 services to the members of your community. So we do thank you for your support and thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Where do you get your funding from, so that people know?
Well, it's a combination of a couple of things. We do have to raise money locally. So there's a formula that, where we do get money from the Victims of Crime Act. So for every $1 that we raise locally, we can then turn that into $4 with federal funding that comes through the Victims of Crime Act.
And any other organizations provide money to you?
Yeah, most of the municipalities in Denton County provide. And then we also have our own independent fundraising efforts that we do. We do an annual gala, golf tournaments, things that, you know, most not-for-profits do to raise money.
All right, thank you. Counsel, anybody have any questions? All right, thank you very much for coming tonight. Appreciate you always coming to update us and we participate, our involvement. Enjoy the fact that you're there to help us. And first time I think I've heard the number of how many people you actually helped in Trophy Club, so.
We added that this year. That's Nick.
I appreciate it.
And this is a beautiful facility. I hadn't been over here before. You guys did a great job on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Holly, I don't see that anybody else requested. Does anybody in the audience want to speak during citizens' presentations? Seeing no one wishing to do so, we'll move on. It's time for announcements and reports. Item number one, receive town manager classes update and provide input regarding the following: early voting and volunteer appreciation reception. Tom?
Mayor and council, early voting began yesterday and will run through April 30th for the upcoming May 4th general and special elections. The early voting site for Denton County residents is right here in the Trophy Club Town Hall. The closest early voting site for Tarrant County residents is at South Lake Town Hall. Additional voting locations are also posted on our website. I'd also like to ask council to save the date for Thursday, June 27th, 2019, for our annual volunteer appreciation event, which takes place at the Trophy Club Country Club between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. We're honoring many of our residents who served the town as dedicated volunteers. Our many volunteers give so much of their time and talent to help make Trophy Club a great place to call home. And it's only fitting that we honor them with a special thanks and a reception. Please join our staff as we thank this exceptional group of people with a light mixer of food, music, and some community fun. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Anybody have any questions of the reports? All right, seeing no one seeking to. Thank you, Tom. We are down to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. So we have items two through five. I did get notice today that Councilmember Lamont would like to remove item number four. Does anybody else have an item to remove? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve two through three, two and three and five.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items two, three, and five.
Second. All right. Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. All right, so we'll go back to item four, consider and take appropriate action regarding amendment, agreement between the Town of Trophy Club and Freezing Nichols for a Drainage Master Plan update and Skyline Creek Channel Improvements feasibility study and authorize the mayor of his designee to execute all necessary documents. And Tommy, I guess you're going to talk about this.
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. As the mayor mentioned, the agenda item is noted in the strategic link as infrastructure and development maintain and improve all town infrastructure. The background explanation is on Jan, on February 9th, 2012, Freezing Nichols provided the town with a comprehensive study of the storm water master plan phase one initiative. To date, three of the five areas studied have had improvements accomplished as required, the last having been completed in July of 2015, which was the culvert addition and bridge street rebuild at Indian Creek Drive near Skyline Drive, with the remaining two were identified with potential improvements that were needed. The phase two proposal as submitted presents a scope of services to provide an update to the drainage master plan, including a feasibility study for the Skyline Creek channel improvements as requested. The cost of the drainage master plan update and Skyline Channel Improvements feasibility study will be at $65,000. The attorney has looked at and approved this report and staff does recommend approval for the agreement for the drainage master plan update and Skyline Creek Channel Improvements study.
All right. If someone wishing to move the adoption of that, I have Greg wanting to speak. Do you want to speak with?
Here's a couple of questions. As we all know, we got an email today from an individual that's pretty active in our community. I realize this is just sending out, but will we be having a town hall meeting on this?
Yes, sir, we will, as we did originally for the first phase of the plan when it went through.
And she mentions create a solution that could be readily maintained. I would gather that if we're going to do something, obviously it would be easily maintained in a difficult situation that we can't get at.
Yeah, what I talked with Freezing Nichols and what they're going to do is be looking out for resolutions to help do the maintenance of the areas depending on where they are. Obviously, the portion that's in question right now is going to be the flume or the drainage ditch that runs along the back of the channel, along the back of the lot and it's on the golf course property. So there'll be some conversations there with the homeowners in the area, again, and also with the golf course people.
And I would gather she has a concern about post-construction that it brought back to, the aesthetics. We'll be dealing with that also?
The, my understanding was, as far as the land work or drainage work, my, I believe that the question on the aesthetic nature was the street. When, when they did dig it up to put in the storm drains, they did do the concrete patching, which is a typical replacement of concrete, where they cut it out to put the storm drainage or sanitary sewer, whatever we have to put in for infrastructure, and instead of doing the entire street rebuild. I don't know at this point how that would be handled, but on what we're doing now, none of that's going to be affected. They're simply going to be doing the hydrology and hydraulic studies of that area to see how they're performing since that work was done. I've had no reports of any flooding or drainage problems in that area since that point when it was completed in 2015. But all that information will be calculated in to calculate the ultimate goal of the 100-year study to see how it's going to work between Indian Creek Drive and TW King.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda item number four.
Second. All right. Do you have a motion by Lamont and a second by Schaffner? Phillip, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just had some clarifying questions. The study that they're doing is just an update to what we've already accomplished, correct?
The majority of it is. It will take, like I said, the hydraulic and hydrologies. They're not going to go back into the hydrology. That doesn't change like the hydraulics do. But they're going to feature the hydraulic study in with, starting at the Fresh Meadow area on downstream all the way through to TW King. That information will help them study and determine what they need to do downstream.
Right. But we, at this point, we have no other, the Fresh Meadow area is complete.
That is correct.
And so anything that we, and that was accomplished 2013?
It was finished in between the end of 13 and 15 because as soon as they finished that, they went right to the, the bridge rebuild and the addition of the flume.
So, so I would think that, that the improvements that we've already made would not be something that Freezing Nichols would look, look at to improve. That's going to be, any kind of maintenance is going to be an issue on town staff and golf course to try to work out, correct?
That's correct. And even, I was talking with Scott Hubley, who was here last time to speak at the update. When we spoke today, he was saying he'd be more than welcome to be involved in that and reach out to the homeowners as well and speak with them to get their ideas and input in order to do what we need to, to make that work.
Yeah, okay. I think the main thing, I just wanted to, to make sure that people understand that this is just a, that the whole purpose of this is to update the storm drainage plan now that we've accomplished over half of what the original plan, so that we can look at other improvements, opening up the culvert, things of that nature.
Exactly. This, this gives us the information we need to proceed further with that section that we haven't touched yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? All right, anyone wishing to ask questions from the audience? All right, we will proceed with the vote. All those in favor of approving consent item number four, show your hands. It is unanimous. All right, as part of our regular session, item number six, consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council recognizing May the 2nd, 2019 as the Day of Prayer in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. This is proclamation 2019-06, and I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Schaffner to read that and then we have some guests that are going to talk to us.
A proclamation of the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, recognizing May 2nd, 2019 as Day of Prayer in Trophy Club, recognizing that 2019 is the 68th consecutive annual observance of the National Day of Prayer and providing an effective date. Whereas, public prayer and national days of prayer have long and significant history in American tradition dating back to the first call of prayer in 1775, when the Continental Congress asked the colonies to pray for wisdom in forming a nation. And the call to prayer has continued throughout our history, including President Lincoln's proclamation of a day of humiliation, fasting, and prayer in 1863. And whereas, these times of national supplication were made official in 1952 when President Harry Truman signed a joint resolution of the US Congress, which enacted legislation setting aside an annual day of prayer for the nation. And in 1988, this law was amended and signed by President Reagan, permanently setting the day as the first Thursday of every May. And whereas, the National Day of Prayer is a vital part of our nation's heritage as it enables us to recall and teach the way in which our forefathers sought the wisdom of God when faced with critical decisions, thus reaffirming the spiritual principles upon which this nation was founded. And whereas, the National Day of Prayer belongs to all Americans and is a day that transcends differences, bringing together citizens from all backgrounds to honor God and to give him thanks for the many liberties and blessings we have received, among them, the freedom to gather, worship, and pray. And whereas, Thursday, May 2nd, 2019 is the 68th observance of the National Day of Prayer in our nation and simultaneously the 27th consecutive observance for the citizens in this 76262 community, having as its theme for the year, "Love One Another." Based upon John 1334, "Love one another just as I have loved you." And whereas, on this National Day of Prayer, we come together as leaders and citizens in unity, as one nation under God, to seek his divine guidance, protection, and strength to meet the challenges that we face, both present and future, and to pray for peace throughout our nation and the world. Now therefore, see Nick Sanders in conjunction with the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, by the power vested to him as mayor of Trophy Club, hereby proclaims Thursday, May 2nd, 2019 as a day of prayer in Trophy Club to coincide with the National Day of Prayer, and that this proclamation shall take effect from and after its date of passage in accordance with law, and it is so proclaimed. And with that, I make a motion to, to pass proclamation 2019-06.
And I'll second. All right, sorry.
I'm jumping in when I get here, right?
Do you have a motion and a second? So we do have Irma Thomas, who's going to come up and address us a little bit and make introductions, or do you want me to introduce all your guests? Are they going to come up too?
I'm all coming.
All right, they're all going to come out.
I'm coming.
All right. So Irma, to start with, if you're not going to say it, how many years you've been leading this in our area?
Well, this is the 27th, the 27th observance. And so it's, it's a real honor and privilege. It honestly is, but, and I want to thank you for the time that you've given us to, you know, just share a few words about the National Day of Prayer. So I want to thank you again for passing this proclamation and for declaring a day of prayer in Trophy Club. And I want to mention that these pastors are part of the prayer leadership for the National Day of Prayer each and every year. They are fine servants of the Lord. They're involved in, you know, in our Town of Trophy Club woven into the fabric of this community. And I want each of them to come forward and introduce themselves and just, your name and the church that you represent.
I'm Barry Klingon. I represent the Church at Trophy Lakes as a pastor.
I'm Edlin Cowley, representing Fellowship United Methodist Church.
Joel Kelebar Church.
Jeff Brooks, the Lake City Church of Christ.
And I wanted them to come forward because this is just a little less than half of the pastors who will be there next week, next Thursday. And it's, this is a unique response, well, opportunity for us, you know, it's a privilege as a, to pray for our nation, to come together like, like we are in public prayer, and to join up with the Town of Westlake and Roanoke simultaneously. So this is unique, you know, for our area. And we've come tonight to just officially thank you again for declaring it a day of prayer. And we want to invite each and every one of you, council members, Mayor Sanders, the town staff, and to come next Thursday, 12 noon, at the Fellowship United Methodist Church. And as you heard, the theme of this year is "Love One Another." And it's certainly a timely message for our nation, our state, our cities and towns, including our town too. And so we've come together as a group to say that we support you, we support our town, its people, we care about this town, and we want you all to join us and come together with us as we come together in unity and pray for one another. And I think the message is truly important to love one another, just as Christ has loved us. So that's all I had to say tonight, and I just encourage everyone to come. And for that, to that end, if anybody would like a poster, this will give the details. I'll leave some in the back and then you can pick that up and you'll know the details.
Irma, thank you very much for coming. Gentlemen, thank you so much for coming. Before you leave, if you would go back to where the flags are on my right, we're going to take a picture of everybody.
Okay, thank you.
But Joel wants to say something, I think.
Hey, real quick, because we don't do it at the Day of Prayer, that'd be weird. But speaking of volunteer appreciation, Tom, I don't know if this is taking action on an item that's not on the agenda, but I just want to publicly thank you, Irma, for your leadership, your servant heart, and all the work you do, because we would never get together. We don't like each other at all. But this is the only reason we're here is because of you. Oh, okay, yeah, we love one another. But if we give Irma a hand publicly for her leadership.
I want to go on the record, if I die, they better continue to love one another and get together, okay?
Except for, except for Joel, right? All right, so let's vote. All those in favor of approving the proclamation, show your hands. All opposed, same side, it is approved. So I'm going to go back here for a pick. Discussion of items for future agenda, including agenda items for consideration on the May 14th, 2019 council agenda, and items from the town council future items, future agenda list. So I have a couple of things. One is a question about page, I guess, 64. Item seven, it says, "Receive town council liaison update, discussion of same," but it, liaison of what?
We usually just have a placeholder for that. We only have three board where there's a council liaison, so it's just a placeholder and that's usually removed like it is this time.
Okay. I guess I've never noticed that for Tom's report, it said liaison. I'm thinking.
We removed that.
Who exactly does he liaison for? Okay. Well, okay, I guess I woke up. Okay. All right, and then I would like to add either to our May 14th meeting or following, a discussion and appropriate action dealing with PD 30 and town home staggering. So we did have a talk and received an email from former P&amp;Z chairman about that. Maybe there's some unclear areas of that. It's been a long process for that plan development and maybe appropriate for us to at least be able to have some discussion about that. So whether or not it's on next agenda or future, I don't care. Obviously, we need to be prepared for that. And then the other thing, I did get a, I think all of us maybe got an email from Councilmember Jensen that asked a question about charter review commission. I didn't get a chance to research it. My memory is we discussed it as a council, but that's my memory, so that could be wrong. So Eric, I don't know if you wanted to try to add that at some point, or?
I just noticed in the charter that it requires a charter review no less than every seven years, and it appears the last time a meeting was had was November of 2012. So I would, I'd recommend that we need to have a discussion about the creation of a charter review in accordance with the charter.
With the charter, okay. So didn't we have some discussion about that not long ago? Am I just?
We may have had some about charter items for the election.
Oh, to be, have them for the election if we had any charter amendments. Right, okay.
We did a few in 2016.
Okay, so I, I think what Eric is asking for and suggesting is that we put it on our future agenda list, that we deal with that appropriately. And I guess what I would say as a way to the citizens, if there's some aspect of the charter that you would like to see changed, added, something there, obviously talk to us. But we will, at some point, I think, have to convene the commission at, for nothing unless we have some submittals of how to deal with that. So just be prepared for that, Eric. Thank you for bringing that up in an email and I made a note of it to make sure we didn't forget it. All right, anybody else want to add something to our future agenda? Let's see if I had. I don't know that it needs to be on the future agenda list, but, but I just was going to bring up that, that council gave specific direction at its previous meeting about finalizing an agreement between Old Town Development and the town dealing with the breadwinner's development agreement and simplifying that. And I know the attorneys have been in conversation about that, and, and that will probably just move forward, but I don't want to forget that secondary, that I think part of that direction was, once a CO is obtained on HG, that we do the same thing with that agreement and simplify it, not need for things that maybe are confusing about it. So I just didn't want us to forget those items. If you add that to future agenda, then maybe we won't. If you add that to future agenda, then maybe we won't. All right, anybody else have something for next meeting or future agenda? Anybody? I don't see anybody seeking the floor. All right. So in just a moment, we're going to convene into executive session into the room on our right as soon as I read that. Item number eight, pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated chapter 551, the council will convene in the executive session to discuss the following. A, 551072, deliberation regarding real property to discuss deliberate, discuss or deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And that's an area that's pretty general, north of State Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive, and west of the town limits. And underneath that is a short discussion about the proposed OTD town agreement related to the breadwinner's property and building. And item number B, 551074, personnel matters to discuss and deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer or employee in section 551071, under subsection two, consultation with attorney to consult with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Item number one, meeting with attorney Simon D. Whiting. And item number two, town manager class. It is 7:33, we are in closed session. Council, you will come to order. It is 10:09, and we have reconvened into regular session. Item number nine, consider and take appropriate action regarding the executive session. I'll move that we direct Simon Whiting to proceed with negotiations with Mr. Class and his attorney in reference to a separation agreement as discussed in executive session. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Sanders, second by Fleury. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. It is 10:10, we are adjourned.